Good evening and welcome to the July tenth, two thousand and twenty-three city council meeting. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's city council meeting is being recorded and will be available on the city's website. Um, welcome to everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. We got a couple of big events tonight. I see there's some great participants here to support our um police and fire. Um, city clerk Dean, would you please take the role?
Councilmember Metzen.
Here.
Councilmember Watten.
Here.
Councilmember Holloway.
Here.
Councilmember Mayhew.
Here.
Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Councilmember Christianson.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
And Mayor Ross.
I am here. Thank you, city clerk Dean. Council, would you please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? And Councilor Johnson, would you please lead?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we now move to our first item of regular business is to approve the agenda. Council may have motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Move by Mayor Tim Holloway, second by Councilor Christianson. Is there any discussion? Councilor Mayhew.
Uh, move to revise the agenda for uh, uh, item number one under appointments. So the proposed action reads move to approve appointment of Brian Lynch. Rather than move to appoint, it's the mayor's to appoint and ours to approve.
Great. Thank you.
Definitely. Wait, do we need a second now?
Yes, we will.
Okay, second.
So I move by Councilor Mayhew and second by Councilor Johnson to change the wording to move to approve the appointment of Brian Lynch as the of Snoqualmie interim police chief. Is there any other changes or suggestions to the agenda? All in favor of that motion? Say aye.
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 Any opposed name? Okay, all in favor of the overall agenda? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? Okay, so the agenda is approved with the change. Um, next is regular business is the interim police chief appointment. Rep. Tim Holloway, would you please read the summary?
Uh, Police Chief Perry Phipps resigned as police chief for the city of Snoqualmie effective July third, two thousand and twenty-three. The mayor has chosen Captain Brian Lynch to serve as the interim police chief until a plan to provide for a permanent replacement is made. And move to appoint Brian Lynch as the city of Snoqualmie interim police chief effective July third, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second. Move by Mayor Tim Holloway and second by Councilor Christianson. Um, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? So the motion passes and just to give you overview, Captain Lynch has twenty-seven years of law enforcement experience and has been with Snoqualmie Police Department for a year. Um, he holds position of commander of the Coalition of Small Cities Major Crimes Task Force and is a recent graduate of West Point Leadership for Law Enforcement. So congratulations and appreciate your stepping forward to be our interim police chief. Would like to say a few words.
Yeah. Thank you, counsel. Um, the uh, the opportunity that that has been given to me tonight, um, I take it very seriously. And it's one that um, while I wasn't looking for it this early, it's one that I'm stepping up to take and that I will do my best to serve the council, serve the citizens of the city of Snoqualmie and North Bend. Um, I just would like to to thank each one of you for your support and uh, I'm gonna do my best for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, um, brings us to the swearing in ceremony of police officer Joseph Spears. I'll hand it back over to interim chief Lynch to do introductions. And as mayor, I will administer the oath of office.
Okay, so now I can relax. Talk about one of my guys, which I like to do. Um, so we are lucky enough tonight to bring before you a brand new officer. Um, he just graduated from the academy two weeks ago and has already started his uh, field training. Uh, this is Joseph Spears. Um, he was born in California, um, but made his way up to Washington apparently by losing a bet with a friend. And then he just stayed. Um, he has served in the Marine Corps for four years, two of which were um, serving two combat tours in Iraq. Um, when he got out of the Marine Corps, he decided that he still wanted to serve and went into the army as an infantryman. Um, he brings with him a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Um, it, for him to be standing here, this is um, kind of an ordained day because his whole entire family is in law enforcement. Um, his father was, he retired as the chief of Willow's Police Department in California and also served as a sergeant in Santa Maria um, Police Department and a deputy in Santa Barbara Department, um, Police Department. And then also his brother, um, which I got to meet a couple of weeks ago at his graduation, um, is a lieutenant for the Bart Police Department. That's the um, the Bay Area Rapid Transit Police Department in San Francisco. So to have that family there uh, a couple of weeks ago to welcome him into the force was was pretty cool. Um, his brother wore his uniform and uh, was there, you know, when when his family got to pin his badge on at the academy, so it was really a a big deal. Um, his sister even works for the police department down in California. Um, so this was just the natural progression of a person that has a servant's heart and this is what he was born to do. So I I consider us extremely lucky to have him here and be a part of our police department. I didn't make up anything, right? That was all true?
We started by the background.
There you go.
Thank you. Hello? Okay. Um, so I, and say your name.
I, Joseph Spears.
Having duly appointed to the office of police officer of the city of Snoqualmie, Washington.
Have been duly appointed to the officer, uh, to the office of police officer of the city of Snoqualmie.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office as prescribed by law to the best of my ability.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office as prescribed by law to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain the ordinances of the city of Snoqualmie.
And that I will support and maintain the ordinances of the city of Snoqualmie.
And the laws and constitution of the state of Washington and the United States.
And the laws and constitution of the s- of the state of Washington and the United States of America.
Congratulations. We're so happy to have you aboard. Thank you. Next item is the Fire Lieutenant Badge Pinning, which I'll turn over to interim chief Bailey.
Thanks for uh, allowing us to time be in front of you again, counselor, uh, counsel. Similar to when I was before you last council meeting for Lieutenant Wisham, tonight we'd like to celebrate Ben Parker and his promotion to lieutenant. Just a little bit about Ben, he joined the fire department as a volunteer firefighter, January of two thousand and nine, and then was hired as a career firefighter in November of two thousand and fourteen. Before coming to Snoqualmie, Ben was a systems engineer at Microsoft, as well as served in the US Army as an ordinance technician. Ben is certified as a firefighter, too, a Washington State EMT, a rope and swiftwater technician, and is pursuing a bachelor's in fire administration currently. Ben has been an acting officer since May of two thousand and twenty-two, and with our vacancies, a lieutenant has served in the long-term acting role since October of twenty-two. But I just want to take a minute, I I mentioned it the last time I was in front of you, but uh, Robert Lazwell, who happens to be here with us tonight, was also serving in that acting lieutenant role since October of twenty, uh, October of last year. So again, I want to take, since he is here in the audience, I want to take the time for him to step up and serve as one of our our acting officers for the the ten months that he did that. So again, thank you, Robert, for that. Back to Ben. Uh, Ben is our IT liaison. He maintains the fire pre-fires of all the buildings and towns, which is a a map and directions on how to uh, the accessing the buildings in town, as well as have a fight a fire if there is ever one in in the buildings. And is a program manager for a hydro inspection and radio operations. The strengths Ben brings to our leadership teams is organizational skills, his attention to detail, his calmness and problem-solving skills refined from his days in the private sector. Ben currently lives in Puyallup with his wife Christina, the audience here, who happens to be one of our volunteer firefighters also uh, with his four children, or their four children. So now the mayor will present uh, his new helmet and as in tradition in the fire service, firefighters will select a loved one to pin on their badge upon initial hiring or promotion. And as Ben is a smart man, he's this, he has selected his wife Christina to pin his badge. So Christina, if you could come up here and pin on Ben's badge for him. And the mayor has your lieutenant helmet for you. So congratulations. Congratulations to Ben and his family, and the department looks forward to many years with Lieutenant Ben Parker on our leadership team.
So we're gonna move on to public comment. Um, we do have a hefty agenda, and so if you came just for the pinning, our, you know, our feelings not hurt if you, if you left or at any point, it's up to you. So um, at this time, we're going to provide time for residents to comment items on the agenda. First, a few ground rules. Um, Snoqualmie residents who are not present have a right to have their elected representatives perform their duties behalf of the city in an efficient and orderly manner. Um, therefore, it will be limited to three minutes each. Please wait to be recognized and state your name and city residence. Um, direct your comments to the council as a whole, not to individual members. Please note that this time is not to ask questions of council, mayor, or staff, or to engage in debate. Um, and last, please respect the decorum of the proceedings as all respect will be afforded to you. So with that, is there anyone like to speak to any concern that is not on the agenda this evening? If so, please raise your hand. We will look both on Zoom and in the city council chambers. I'm not seeing anyone in council chambers raising their hands nor online. Right? Right? Okay. So, public comment is now closed. You're moving on to the consent agenda. Approval of the city council meeting minutes dated June twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three, and approval of the claims approval report dated July tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second. So it's moved by Mayor Tim Holloway, second by Councilor Washington. Um, is there any public comment regarding any of these items on the consent agenda? If so, please raise your hand in council chambers, looking in council chambers and or online. And I'm not seeing anyone raising their hand. Right, so moving on, um, councilors, any discussion? Um, Councilor Mayhew.
Uh, fellow council members, um, in your email inbox is an email from Drew Bootay regarding some questions that I raised um, uh, regarding the uh, the uh, uh, claims. And um, there were some pretty um, just procedural questions and some detail questions about some details. The response is extremely well-written. It's straight on point, just a fantastic read. It reminded me of two of the questions had to do with just process, how do we process this and how do we process that? I think you'll find it really worth your time to read it if you haven't. Um, and I just want to thank Mr. Bootay for fantastic job on that response, but it's worth your time to take a look.
Thank you. Any other comments?
But you were satisfied with all of it. Sorry, sorry. You were satisfied with all the response. I got to read the questions. I didn't get to uh, see the responses, but.
Councilor Mayhew.
Yeah, the the uh, answers were fantastic. I had no concerns after reading the responses and um, uh, so um, yeah, I have no concerns with us approving this. And then just in terms of the process uh, information there, I just, it's fantastic. And I think it was helpful to me to be uh, refreshed around those points, and I think you'll all find it useful as well.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? CNN, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed name? And the considered agenda is approved. Um, next item, committee reports. Is there any public safety committee report?
No report.
Community Development Committee report?
No report.
First committee report for Parks and Public Works is AB twenty-three dash zero nine one Icon Materials Amendment Number One, two thousand and twenty-three Overlay Project. Councilor Benson, would you please read these? I guess.
You want to do it? Yeah, yeah, I I wasn't able to attend.
Right, Mayor Tim Holloway is on the random meeting.
Yeah.
So would you please read the summary and motion, Mayor Tim Holloway?
Okay, um, this is ginger bill seeks to amend the existing public work contract with CPM Development Corporation, DBA Icon Materials Incorporated for the two thousand and twenty-three street overlay project. The two thousand and twenty-three overlay project includes grind and overlay portion of Tocco Road, portion of Stone Quarry and Southeast Mountain Avenue and a portion of Mill Palm Road. This amendment adds to the scope on Mill Palm Road uh, to total contract amount. And down to move to approve amendment number one to the public works contract with Icon Materials Incorporated for the two thousand and twenty-three overlay project.
Seconded.
Move by Mayor Tim Holloway, second by Councilor Vincent. Is there any public comment regarding this item, this agenda bill? And we'll look online. Not seeing anyone raise their hand nor in council chambers. Okay, um, if you have any questions, we do have Hind Ahmed, who's a project engineer, um, that would be able to answer any questions or council, you have any discussion? Rep. Tim Holloway?
Just uh, as you see in the contract bill, this went out for bid, came back uh, for once, very, and you, as these contracts seem to go, this one came back very reasonable. So took the opportunity for a very bad piece of road to expand the scope and include that in. This still leaves a budget of about four hundred and thirty-seven, I think, K, if I remember surging right on what I just read. Um, that we can apply for overruns and other projects, but this is coming in under budget. We're expanding scope, still remaining under budget. Good thing to do again for a bad piece of road that really needs some TLC.
Councilor Christianson. Overall, the four hundred and thirty-something thousand dollars that's left will still be used at the second part of the biennium, if I understood correctly, right? We're just getting this piece of roadway completed now, and there will be uses for it down the, down the road as well.
Um, I can can speak to this more in detail than I can, but uh, there are other areas in paving that we would like to use that money. There are other treatments that the city will benefit from in other areas. We really want to stretch those dollars as far as we can and get the most bang for our buck. Carson, I can't share my screen, but uh, if you could put the second page of exhibit B up on the wall for us. That will show you the extent of the the addition. Second page. Keep going. There you go. The red line's what's already approved, and then the green line is what this action would add.
Is Hind?
So uh, for the street treatments, we have like different type of treatments. One of those types of treatment is the overlay. Uh, so for the street budget, we use it for all treatments. Now we're bringing all the overlay. We still have bland for other treatments that are gonna be, gonna happen next year.
Okay. Councilor Johnson.
And uh, is this one of the sections that sometimes floods? Rather frequently?
The red section definitely floods, the green section not so often, but yes, some of it.
Uh, follow-up?
Yes.
Yeah, so is there anything special that that we can do to try to just make the road any more robust? No? Okay.
Well, this is gonna make it more robust.
Than what it was?
Yeah.
Okay.
Fresh oil is always better than fifty-year-old oil.
Yeah. All right, thanks.
Any other comments? All right, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed name? Right, thank you. I know we've been getting, receiving comments from people that live out in the area, and they're, they will be happy that this will be fully completed, so thank you. Um, second committee report, Parks Public Works, AB twenty-three dash zero nine two, resolution number sixteen fifty-one to adopt the water system plan and water use efficiency goals. Rep. Tim Holloway, please read the summary and motion.
All right. This is your double seeks council approval to adopt water systems plan dated July second, two thousand and twenty-two and authorize final submittal to agencies. The WSPS are required by government entities prior to providing water service and must be prepared in accordance with Washington State Department of Health Regulations under chapter twenty, or two forty-six through two ninety of the Washington Administrative Code. It requires water purveyors to update the water systems plans every ten years. The primary purpose of this, of the water system plan is to identify and reschedule and schedule water system improvements that correct existing deficiencies, ensure a safe and reliable system for the current and future customers. Uh, move to approve resolution sixteen fifty-one, adopting the water system plan and authorize final submittal to agencies. May I have a second?
Second.
Move by Mayor Tim Holloway, second by Councilor Washington. Is there any public comment regarding the water sys- water system plan?
Wasn't that Benson?
Oh. Well, there were.
I was doing an impression of Washington, so.
They both went at the same time, and I saw Arrow, someone sitting next to Washington pointed at him, so. Okay. So not seeing anyone raise their hand online nor in the city hall. So councilor, is there, we do have Andrew Vining, project engineer and representative from RH two online, in case you would, you have any questions regarding the plan. Um, Rep. Tim Holloway?
The councilor, I just want to, you know, we've already reviewed this and approved it once. The only reason it's not on consent uh, was I, I was the public works committee, and when I'm a council, a committee of one, I'm not gonna do consent. Okay, so that's the only reason it's not on consent. We've already gone through this. Um, not, you know, we can go through it again, but don't think you need to.
Any other discussion or questions or? Okay. Moving to vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? Well, the water system plan and water use efficiency goals pass unanimously. Thank you. Moving on, are there any further report from Parks and Public Works Committee?
No further report.
Any further report from Finance Administration Committee?
No, no report.
All right, I guess we're going on to the mayor's report. So several things. So first of all, thank you to the Snoqualmie Ridge ROA and Church on the Ridge for the fun July fourth activities, which included, you know, kids parade, games, bouncy houses, music, food, and just fantastic fireworks show. Um, this was a wonderful tradition for our community, and also thank you to our staff, including the police department, firefighters, um, Parks and Public Works for helping with the July fourth event and also all the events this past weekend. Um, if you're around, you saw there was a lot of traffic because we had the sip wine event, we had a major soccer event, we had day out with Thomas, and there's also a major bicycle event that was going on as well. So we appreciate the high levels of service that our staff continues to provide to our community in helping out these events. Um, Snoqualmie received the two thousand and twenty-two Tree USA Growth Award for communities that have demonstrated increased levels of tree care and community engagement. So thank you to our urban forestry group and our community for making our urban forest a priority and creating a greener future for its residents. There will be a conversation with council event on Thursday, July twenty-seventh at five PM at the Snoqualmie Community Park, and this will be held right before the music in the park event, so council members, if you're able to attend, that'd be great to see you there. We've already noticed the quorum possibility, so. Uh, next week I will be presenting along with Councilor Watten at, in Olympia during the Washington State Transportation Commission meeting regarding the application um, that with the city submitted for the jurisdictional transfer of the Snoqualmie Parkway to Washita. So hopefully that will um, be a positive outcome, and they will approve it. Of course, there's more phases after that, but anyway, um, I'm proposing that we um, set up a special workshop with our legislatures, possibly in the fall to talk with them about what the issues are for the city. Um, think about our legislative priorities as they return, you know, in January to their session. So if they have, if they know what we, what is important to the city, in the summer, this fall, they can start thinking about it and um, and working towards, you know, towards helping us with our, with our priorities. So we will um, come back, maybe talk through it at F and A and think about if you want to do a special workshop or a luncheon or something that we can get our three legislatures here. Um, yes, Councilor Mayhew?
Mayor, fantastic. Fully support you on that. Let me know how I can help. I think we all, hopefully, I believe, not hopefully, we all, I'm sure, believe that, but let me know how I can help. I would say um, you know, the earlier, the better. Because by the time they get to the fall, they actually start, the legislators start doing some of their activities, getting ready for the session and so on. So I think the earlier we're in their heads, the better. And uh, anyway, happy to help however I can, and so pleased to hear that you're doing, you're pursuing that.
Great, thank you. And one final note, over the weekend, our Snoqualmie resident Joe Wascom placed second in the fifteen hundred meters at the USA Track and Field Outdoor Championship at Hayward Field at the University of Oregon, which is awesome. And so we will see what his next step is, but anyway, there's, there's, there's a huge next step. We're just waiting for it to be announced. So anyway, so it's fantastic. Okay, now I will turn it over to our interim city administrator on ready to talk about the department reports.
I'm ready. See if the computer's ready. Good evening, councilmembers. Um, so communication reports that are um, Facebook uh, reach was a hundred and thirteen thousand uh, users activities on the, on the site. Uh, we have five thousand eight hundred eighty-one followers, eighty-two of which are new. Um, some are out there. There's another hundred and nineteen to get us to six thousand by next month. So uh, I hope people pass it around and get some people signed up. We'll, we'll keep Dana going. Eleven thousand impressions of Twitter, Instagram. Um, our communication team keeps busy pushing out information. Uh, no surprise, the top posts. Uh, no surprise, the top posts involve SR eighteen and I ninety lane closures and the traffic tracking, traffic get them that uh, that causes um, and the Meadow Brook Bridge closer that was for one day for the bridge inspection. Um, our website's busy. There were nineteen thousand hits on our website last month. Um, top pages, as usual, the Twin Peaks page. Um, but big truck day did make it in there in the top three, so uh, we had a great big truck day event. Um, and once again, the most click news releases were Highway ninety and, and State Route eighteen. Um, they supported uh, some pretty big engagement initiatives uh, last month. Uh, the mayor's meeting with Echo Glen and Public Safety, uh, that was a big meeting. Um, and then uh, they worked with the Fire Chief Bailey to get a, a fireworks safety video out. Um, they've been supporting my department of, a ton with our Parkway Rehab project. We don't wanna surprise people. Uh, we know we're in the way. We will get out of the way as soon as we can. And we promise you a new road as soon as we do that. Uh, moving on to community development, uh, they did about sixty-five new applications uh, last month uh, for, for the building department. And the planning department processed six business licenses and are working on one pre-application. They did hold two public meetings, um, and they are, are gonna be holding uh, a big land use planning uh, meeting this month. Uh, it's one of the last ones we have. Um, still working on the model train museum uh, as, as team model train. Um, and then uh, some of the other projects are listed here and, and they're ongoing. Um, the, the events, uh, we had the uh, big truck day. Uh, we estimate the attendance at about eight hundred people. Um, that's a big day. Um, I personally made it out there for a little bit and uh, a good time was being had by all. Um, uh, and even though the horn time went on, the kids didn't know they could honk the horn, so it was still pleasant. So, and then moving on to finance and HR, the ERP project uh, Tyler continues to dominate their world. Um, they're looking at the go-live, you know, next month, so they're, they're, they're working hard to get that ready to go. Um, they were able to submit the twenty twenty-two financial statements to the state auditor's office. The audit itself is not gonna take place until winter of twenty-three. Um, and they're still working to, with the auditor's office to complete the twenty twenty-one audit. Um, and they processed uh, five thousand utility payments last month. Um, seven hundred B and O taxes. Recruitment continues for uh, many positions throughout the city. Um, currently, there's twenty-one full-time equivalent employee positions that are vacant, which equals about eighteen percent of our workforce. I, I wanna express my gratitude to the remaining ninety-two percent or eighty-two percent that are uh, picking up the slack. Um, calls are not going unanswered. Uh, work is not going undone. Um, people are really putting their shoulder to the wheel and uh, working really hard to get stuff done. Um, fire department, uh, they had a hundred thirty-six incidences. Uh, fifty-six of which were emergen- emergency medical services and forty-four percent were fire-related incidences. They had seventy-nine EMS rescue called, calls, that was the prime, the primary number of incidences. Um, they had EMS transports of uh, nine uh, for the month. Um, and they conducted uh, four hundred seventy-three hours of training in June. The majority of the training, thirty-nine percent was fire training. Um, they are, have been out doing inspections for risk reduction, twenty-seven were completed. Um, and they've issued uh, thirty-two violations. The uh, most egregious violation being storage, the storing stuff to close to electrical panels or incompatible materials, et cetera. Uh, and they were able to conduct uh, two hundred students through CPR AED training at Mount Say, Say High School. And then Parks and Public Works, uh, we, this is the busy season, uh, projects are running, um, the parkways going well. Uh, haven't been getting any too many upset about that. Um, our stair project is paused at the moment. We're having to find some uh, decking material because there was additional rot found when we got rid of the concrete. Um, uh, the, the projects at the wastewater treatment plant are going strong. Um, everybody's, you know, just last weekend, we had people all over this place. And so we had people running around taking care of garbage cans and, you know, all those things that you don't think about unless they're a mess. And then it's top, it ruins your day. So my hat goes off to my staff for, for staying on top of those things and, and make sure that stays though. Um, our Department of Corrections crew have been focusing on fences, as you can tell. Um, and they have done a, a ton of fence work. Um, close to half a mile of fence work uh, in the month of June. And finally, our police department, they had um, five hundred and seventy-eight calls for service in Snoqualmie and four hundred fifty-one in North Bend.
I believe that's twenty twenty-two.
Oh, sorry. Six seventeen and six forty-seven. Um, and our response time uh, in Snoqualmie prior one calls is two minutes forty-five seconds. Can't do better than that. Um, and only four minutes thirty seconds in North Bend. Um, that is a fantastic stat. And uh, thefts appear to be down this, in the month of June from last year. Uh, vehicle pros appear to be down and vehicle thefts um, in both uh, North Bend and Snoqualmie. So they are out there doing their thing. So. Uh, there were uh, twenty-eight mental health professional contacts in Snoqualmie in June and seventeen in North Bend. So Stephanie is, is doing a good job also. There's a lot more data, data in there. Um, invite you to prove it yourself. As always, we are all standing by to answer any detailed questions you have about anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Constable Mayhew.
Yeah, I just want to double back to the uh, portion of the report on the status of audits. Um, and um, the, the fact that the twenty twenty-one audit is not yet finished by the state auditor's office is simply unacceptable. I find it unacceptable. I think that the city should find it unacceptable. A municipal audit, two years later, still not finished in many states of the union would be illegal. Not our state, where we have a state auditor's office instead of having these done by auditors, but that's a different topic. I don't really care who does them. They must be done timely. If something were to come up out of that twenty twenty-one audit, that means all of twenty-two happened with that still in place and we're now more than halfway through twenty-three. And we haven't been told by the auditor that they might have found something. So this kind of delay doesn't let us do our jobs as a council. It doesn't let administration do their jobs. It doesn't let our staff do their jobs. And then on top of that, it means that our staff is still spending their time answering questions for events that happened two and a half years ago. It's not a way our staff should be having to spend their time. So for what it's worth, I just want to again register, I have said this to the state auditor each time they've been here since they've had started these long delays on our audits. And I, I would just encourage administration mayor to consider registering again a complaint with the state auditor's office. These audits cannot take this long and still be of use. Not, I shouldn't say it that way, but their use is greatly diminished by this kind of a delay and potentially we could then be in a situation where something happened in twenty-one. They didn't tell us till now, therefore it happened again in twenty-two, so then that audit gets affected. And by the way, we're halfway through twenty-three, so we probably did it in twenty-three, so that audit's affected. It's just not acceptable for this kind of delay. So for what it's worth, I think, uh, I'm sorry that our staff has to deal with this and I think we ought to complain about it, but that's one council member's point of view.
Thank you. Thank you. That's for Mayhew. Did you want to say something?
Uh, thank you very much for your comments on that. Um, as elected officials, we love you to probably get in touch with your state reps uh, for the most part to lodge some of the concerns that we have, I guess, around the state auditor's office. Um, they are suffering from labor shortages, much like there are in other places, and it's kind of hard for them to compete with the private sector for the most part. But I think we need probably an avenue like you would have in other states, for example, for us to actually seek out private audit services to get our audit done quicker uh, for many of the reasons that you suggested. So I think it's probably uh, uh, an issue, right, um, amongst the elected officials. I don't know much what the finance department can do to kind of spur that a little bit. So I would encourage council here to maybe reach out to your state reps and see if there's any sort of changes to the state law that we can potentially recommend. Thank you.
Constable Johnson.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm curious, uh, if there are similar delays happening in other cities, especially bigger cities. Because I just did a quick calculation and based on our population, I would expect that it would take two hundred years to complete an audit in Seattle. So I, I'm just hoping that we are of an equal priority.
Constable Mayhew.
Yeah, I'll just tell you, no larger cities are done on time. And the reason is because they receive above the threshold of federal grants. And when you receive federal grants above threshold, a federal law requiring an audit within a certain time period kicks in. And the state auditor therefore gets those audits done in that timeframe. By the way, if we would go get more federal grants, but be careful, they come with a lot of strings. You're not so sure you'll want them. But uh, you, you know, when you're right at thresholds, when you're getting a lot of them, of course you want them. But in any event, to answer your question, yeah, the big cities get done on time and the smaller cities have to wait and we're not the only one waiting, but it's not okay for any of us.
I guess I asked a question, didn't our ARPA funds, were those considered the grants that would have put us over that threshold?
Uh, yeah, I would assume so.
Yeah, so we have the same issue, but. Oh, um, our, Jim Ferguson, our H R I T or H R I T, H R I T and Finance Director.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Budget Manager, um, Latte answered the question with regards to a single audit, so we, we did go over that threshold. So we are subject to a single audit um, with the state auditor's office. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, remember Tim Holloway?
Well, uh, can we go back on the agenda? Uh, one, I've got two items for committee of the whole, and I believe we've got another item for liaison report.
Yes, we will.
Uh, okay.
You ready?
Yeah, you're ready.
Okay, we're done with the power reports? Yeah, I, my apologies, I skipped over it. So now we're heading back to commission, committee liaison reports, so. Constable Washington.
So, um, next week on July nineteenth, we'll have the, our quarterly meeting, the Snoqualmie Watershed Forum. It'll be at the uh, Salish Lodge. Um, prior to the, to the actual um, meeting, we'll have a tour. And so I'm gonna make sure I get this right here. So we're gonna have three stops in the tour. I'm really excited about this. Um, so with the city of Snoqualmie and Snoqualmie Tribe will be speaking about restoration and water quality at the Three Forks Natural Area. So that's one of the stops. The second stop will be uh, the Fish Hatchery Road Wetland Reconnection Project. And the final stop will be the Fall City Flood Plate Restoration Project, both um, you know, downstream of uh, Snoqualmie Falls. So uh, the tour will kick off at three o'clock. Uh, if you're interested, just let me know and I'll get you on the list. Please be there two forty, two forty-five. We'll have vans for those who don't wanna drive and fill inside the vans and the vans will shuttle us back and forth. And the actual meeting will kick off at about five thirty and dinner's provided, so love to see you there.
Great, thank you. Remember Tim Holloway?
So uh, two items. One, in the last F and A meeting, uh, we kind of had an agenda build came up that uh, nobody exactly knew where it came up from. So my request and kind of an etiquette thing that if we want to get things in the agenda, that we do it either through, well, preferably through both, the department head affected and through the committee affected and bring it up through that way. Okay, so that we've got that knowledge moving forward. But really, it, it's not fair to have a department head unaware of something that they should know about when we're asking about it in F and A. Okay? Uh, having said that, um, I would like to have, uh, so I was in attendance in a uh, athletic event this weekend in which the appearance was that one of participants had a head injury. And the referee wanted to have other discussions and deal with it. So I would like to have a discussion in public works about concussion emphasis for those who want to rent our facilities. If nothing else, just to reinforce, I do not want any child to suffer concussion. Uh, uh, unavoidable concussion or something going on. So I would appreciate that kind of discussion in uh, Parks Public Works, if nobody has any objection. Two, uh, I love your uh, discussion about audit and I would love to have a discussion at F and A of maybe a council reaction to that, to send maybe something to uh, to the state, to the audit offices, to whoever, our reps uh, about this situation. I'm not sure what kind of effect we'll have, but you can always ask. Okay, so if nobody objects with that, I would love to have that on the F and A agenda uh, coming up next week.
Constable Johnson.
Yeah, my only concern with uh, the Parks Public Works uh, head injury question is, I wonder if um, if the staff involved in Parks and Public Works is the best equipped to answer questions about hand injuries and policies related to that, or if it should be a uh, public safety issue. Or, or we could invite uh, the staff related to public safety.
I'm just, I'm just more, I, I guess my, my approach or thinking was that at least when uh, organizations approach us, that we do ask, do you have a concussion policy in place and are you doing it? Maybe nothing more than that, just to make sure that they are, that it is an emphasis for them and us. And it may already exist.
Interim City Administrator.
I, I just would ask that we could do that the first meeting in August. Uh, it's a quick turnaround for next week.
Okay, as you're comfortable, give that.
As Rowton?
I, I've got quick four bullets. Uh, the Meadowbrook Farm Preservation Board met today. And the two cities are working through the I L A agreement. Of course, the last one has expired and the new one will serve us for twenty-five years. The second item, and that's on the Snoqualmie Valley Housing Task Force. I held a housing chat on July fifth, which council members Christensen and Washington, as well as Director Artetia were in attendance. Uh, that work has moved on to council members, Washington's Public Policy Subcommittee, as they're looking at surplus city-owned land for consideration and later um, for council consideration as well. The next one will be, my next housing chat will be on August second. Um, and we'll be discussing funding options. And I've extended invitations to the Department of Commerce and USDA to be guest presenters. Uh, the third bullet is that the Snow Valley Innovation Center that came from the Snoqualmie Economic Development uh, Commission is working with Angelie Dodge of uh, King County Department of Local Services. We're having our um, third meeting this week uh, on the possible formation of the Snoqualmie Valley Economic Alliance. And we are involving the cities of North Bend, Duval, Carnation, as well as Empower Youth. The Chamber of Commerce in that discussion will be back with more information on that. We've also been accepted into the Washington State Department of Commerce's um, Innovation Cluster Accelerator Program, along with six other organizations in the state. And they're helping us um, build out our capacity so that we can serve more startups and existing businesses. And lastly, the Regional Law, Safety and Justice Committee will meet on July twenty-seventh. I'm one of the seven representatives from the Sound Cities Association. I'm one of the seven representatives from the Sound Cities Association serving on that. And there's only two representatives, um, from small cities, us and, uh, Black Diamond. So. The, the, the item I'm hoping that they will address and I've asked for. And that is the potential closure of the King County Jail that has been suggested by the county executive. And what kind of impact that would have on us and what are the alternatives which have not been made apparent. So. Um, if you're interested, we meet at seven thirty and you're welcome to join us. Seven thirty in the morning, by the way.
So do you send out invites to that or maybe you can send a link. That'd be great. Thank you. Great. Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Council Christiansen.
Uh, so for the S C A pick committee, which is Public Issues Committee, the next meeting will be this Wednesday from seven to nine. You can attend on Zoom if you'd like. But matters that they'll be discussing with the Affordable Housing Committee Charter. Uh, that'll be an update that's provided. And then they'll also be discussing the regional emergency management coordination. So if anybody would like to attend. Let me know. They are also having a meeting in person, um, as well, but I think that they're doing numbers. On that would need to know probably by tonight if you wanted to attend in person, but the Zoom link works quite well.
P M.
P M, yes.
Any other updates or comments? Right. CNN. All right. So the next item on our agenda is. The, is it executive session? So tonight we have executive session pursuant to R C W forty-two dot three zero dot one one one. Or one one zero, one little I to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions. Or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency, the governing body or a member acting. An official capacity is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the agency or. Our agency. So for approximately, how long do you anticipate? Maybe twenty minutes at the most? Okay, so we say. That, yeah, twenty minutes. So we will take a couple minute break and then come back at eight fifteen. There will most likely be action, possible action following the executive session. So we will come back. To open session again about eight fifteen P M. And we will stay online because we do have our, we will include our interim city minister, city administrator. Um, Mike Chambles or Adam C Attorney, um, Dave Lanahan, and then our, um. H R Director Jen Ferguson, and I believe that's all of them. Okay. And so we will go ahead and, um, I guess we need to keep this going. We'll need to clear the. Council, is there a new link? There's a link. Okay. So you were sending a new link. So we will get out of this, log off this Zoom and go into the next Zoom. And then save this link to come back to. Thank you. Right. We are coming back out of executive session is now eight thirty-seven. And seeing that there's no further business to come for council, we'll enter training motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
So my customer may Hughes, second by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. Is there, I guess we'll just go to a vote. All this in favor of the I. Any opposed name? All right, we are adjourned. Have a good evening. Thank you, everyone.